I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's July 22nd, and I will begin with our statement. I will note that Ms. Lee Jones is out today on vacation, a well-earned rest, and I am joined by Commissioner Penny Giffens. And this is our statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, Ms. Giffens, did you want to amend our agenda?
I do, thank you. I move to amend our agenda to add item F, Executive Order 2020-33. Do I need to go further from that?
No, and it's going to be item F. I'm going to second that. Mr. Cockrell, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 2-0.
Great, thank you so much. And with that, we will, and that's going to be item F, and with that, we're going to move on to department updates, and we will begin with the Health Department, Ms. Cottle.
Good morning, thank you. I am happy to report first that the Health Department's divisions of vital records, so birth and death records, environmental health, that includes septic foods, general environmental, and our administrative office has successfully relocated to the North Showers Building, and we completed that last week. Staff have been trying to get through those phone calls and emails and messages that they weren't able to get through last week while we were moving. So again, I thank everybody for their patience. We have lots to catch up on, and that's kind of been a challenge, and we've been working through that this week. I would remind individuals that they, we have a call tree when they call into our office, so they listen to that, they can find the division that they want. But if they want a direct number, those are listed on our website as well as email addresses, so they're welcome to contact somebody directly that way. Our vital records staff does answer the phone as they are able, but that call tree allows them to focus on vital records. And even though there may be three of them there, there are times when they are all helping somebody else or engaged in something that is taking them away from answering a general call. So I, again, just appreciate everyone's patience with that. I will remind people that the Futures Clinic, which is in the lower level of the Health Services Building, our preparedness coordinator, our education staff, our disease intervention staff are still located and open, we're all open by appointment, but some of our staff are still in the lower level of the Health Services Building, and some of us are in North Showers. And then for the bigger news, last night, our Board of Health met, and they adopted a regulation to match our health order regarding face coverings and gathering sizes, what was released last week. After hearing from people and getting questions, we did assess those questions and the order, we wanted to provide some clarification. The Board last night with the regulation had a small change or two, and so those, both of those documents are being edited so that they meet what was approved. And once that is done, then the regulation will be signed by Kay Leach, our Board Chairman, and then we'll also have a revised health order from Dr. Sharp, our health officer, so that they match one another exactly. So that was the intent there. Again, we listened to people and questions, and you think that you have everything clear, and you find that it's, you know, not quite as clear as you thought it was. So we did hear people, we did try to take those into account, and hopefully this will clarify some of that. The regulation does authorize local law enforcement to assist in enforcement of this regulation, but I do want to stress that our intent has been and continues to be about voluntary compliance. The intent of this regulation is not to issue fines or tickets, but it is just to provide all of the resources to enable us to enforce a regulation if we're going to have it. So first and foremost, with a situation, we want to inform and educate, and we'll be sending these out, hopefully they will all be signed today, and then we'll get them posted on our website. They may, it may be tomorrow before we have them on our personal Health Department page, and then we'll be doing a press release and send them out to the media as well with some clarification in that. But our first and foremost is to inform and educate the public about the order, about the regulation, about the need for wearing face coverings, for example, and then to link people to resources. So I know the EMA Director will probably talk about all the different places that people can go to get face coverings. I'm pleased to say that the county has, is making those face coverings or face shields available to people that don't have them, can't get one, and they're available at many of the local fire departments. I want to say thanks to them for helping serve and get those out. The Health Department, Commissioner's Office, other places, the EMA Director also has those. We're providing those to law enforcement so that they have them. So if they do encounter someone during the course of their day-to-day work and activities that needs a face covering, they'll have one available to give them, and they can help us educate and inform, and I'm sure, and that we can count on them for that, and I thank them for that. So again, tickets are not intended to be a first action, and we just want to make sure that that's sort of that last resort, if you will, voluntary compliance is what we want. Our focus as far as complaints will also be on businesses that are intentionally not complying with the order as opposed to those who are trying but maybe struggling, and we will work with them any way we can to figure out ways that they can increase their compliance. Complaint forms will be available soon on the website, and we'll be using the county website for people to submit those complaints, and we'll have new staff onboard in the next week or so to start helping us process those complaints. That is also true for the exemption process. With our gathering size limits changing, there is an exemption process. That form and request will be up soon as well on our website, and people will be able to put in for an exemption if they're having a crowd larger than is in our gathering size. And we'll be processing those starting sometime next week, once all that's in place. We do want to ensure, part of the reason for that exemption, we understand that there are going to be circumstances where people, maybe they fall into that 50-person category, but they're having an event with 60 people. And if they can provide distancing and ensure face coverings and those kinds of prevention things are in place, then certainly we want to be able to provide them a reasonable opportunity to have that event. And I do want to clarify as well that our mask order did go into effect last week, but we also recognize, especially for some businesses or events that were already planned, that that may have been a little bit of a challenge, and there's always grace in people doing the best that they can on such short notice. So we appreciate and want to say thanks to those events that may have had to adapt very quickly for that. As far as gathering size limits or the seating in bars and areas and those kinds of things, that goes into effect throughout the county on the 31st, and that's what we will be enforcing. So just to provide some clarification, the city, the mayor did put out an order that they would be enforcing this earlier, but that is the city's order, it is not the county's order. So we will not be handling any of those complaints until after the 31st. And just in closing, I would say that we continue to monitor as well as the state. We continue to talk with the state and with the university and with the hospitals to monitor our situation and what's going on. I know that there's lots of concern, we have concern too, about our rising testing numbers and the age group and all of those things. So we do continue to monitor that, and we will adjust orders as we need to.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle, and thank you to everyone on the board. And I know you were there at the meeting last night, and you just seem to never get a moment off. We appreciate you so much and all your hard work throughout this whole event. Commissioner Giffens, do you have comments or questions?
No, I just, I want to thank Ms. Cottle for all her hard work. We know that in doing these kinds of things, it will help to keep businesses open through all this and keep from overwhelming our healthcare system. So I really appreciate this. This is a wonderful step forward.
Right, absolutely. Thank you so much. Excellent. Next, for a department update, we have Ms. Allison Moore from Emergency Management.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. I have a couple of updates. Ms. Cottle talked about some of the places that are offering those face masks. We do have face coverings available for residents in Monroe County that cannot provide one for themselves. I'd like to quickly mention those places, and then if you have one closest to you, that would be our recommendation for you to contact that place. But at any, at any rate, you can contact any of these places. We ask that you make a phone call to make that request because many of them are only open by appointment. Even our fire departments, who are open 24 hours, would like to know you're coming and can plan accordingly for that for their safety as well. And we ask that you make those phone calls between the hours of 9:00 and 3:00. And then if you need to pick up other times other than 9:00 to 3:00 during that 9:00 to 3:00 phone call, those arrangements can in fact be made. They are, county offices that can, you can pick up are the Monroe County Board of Commissioners Office, the Monroe County Health Department, and the Monroe County Emergency Management Office. Our fire departments that are offering face covering pickups are Bean Blossom Township, Benton, Bloomington City Stations 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, Northern Monroe Fire Station 25, Ellisville Station 71, and Van Buren Station 29. And then we also have a list of township trustees, which also we have been able to supply face coverings for, and they are also handing out, and they are Bean Blossom, Benton, Clear Creek, Perry, Richland, Salt Creek, and Van Buren. So thank you to all of those people that are willing to help distribute those. I know that on the very first day, one of our fire departments was able to hand out 57 masks. So we are distributing, people are making those requests, you can in fact do that, it is working smoothly, and we are glad for that. The only other announcement I have is we do have a blood drive scheduled for the 28th of July at Monroe County Convention Center. It is full, and due to that, we have in fact worked with the Red Cross to secure yet another blood drive. And we were hoping for the beginning of August, but the Red Cross is so overwhelmed, and so we have a date secured for the 24th of August. So we were hoping we would get one in a little earlier, but we are fortunate that we will have yet another drive for August, and it is scheduled for the 24th. And there are still, obviously, since it's just now being announced, spots available. So if that's something you're interested in, go and secure a spot quickly because they do in fact go fast. That's all I have at this time.
Great, thank you so much. That's a lot of coordination, and we certainly appreciate it. And we'll note that folks who are interested in picking up a face mask or shield, a face shield, which is great, can also stop by the County Courthouse North Door between 10:00 and 12:00 or 1:00 and 3:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And they don't even have to call ahead on that particular one. But the others, yes, please call ahead. They're doing a great job of putting things together into bags and putting your name on it and getting it, and getting it to the right person for pickup. So it's excellent. So grateful to everybody for all their work coming up to get these distributed, and thank you for getting all of this coordinated. That's a huge job, we appreciate you. Commissioner Giffens, do you have comments or questions?
I was just going to ask, Ms. Moore, is the Red Cross still doing the COVID antibody testing if you donate?
They are, yes. And our August blood drive will also have that as well.
Awesome, great, thank you for organizing that. We're so proud to co-sponsor that, and we're appreciative of the Monroe County Convention Center for hosting as well. It's a perfect place to do it, lots of space, and everything's by appointment, which is why you need to go to redcross.warren.org to sign up. And you're going to have to manipulate the date because it is so far in advance, for a month in advance, so.
Excellent. And other organizations now have picked up on this and are sponsoring blood drives too. So it's not just the number that we've done, but it's really gotten other folks to move.
Yeah, absolutely. The whole community is really banding together. We appreciate it so much. Yep, great work, thank you. All right, next we will hear from Lisa Ridge, Public Works Director. You have a road and traffic report for us? It's raining. A lot. You're on mute. You're on mute. There you go.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, yeah, actually, so the storms did kind of change our plans for the day, so, and that would happen Monday also after Sunday night storms. But next week, we plan on going back down to Coontz Road and wedging leveling that road with paving from Duvall to Rockport Road. So just doing normal activities right now, like I said, it's trees, so.
Right, yes, their trees are, yeah, we had, we had issues on our street as well this weekend. Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Giffens, do you have comments or questions?
No, I can't imagine everything that Ms. Ridge juggles every single day.
It's everybody, we do it together.
It's a great team, thank you. Thank you so much. Excellent. And next we have Ms. Mary Elfman, Veterans Service Officer from Monroe County. She's going to give us an update on our beautiful monuments upgrade.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanted to, not that it isn't very evident, but the gentleman for Building Services at the courthouse did a wonderful job of cleaning the memorial after our little protest. I can't thank them enough. There was also a veteran by the name of Tim Morrow, who was out there working with them just out of the kindness of his heart. So, so thanks to all those guys. It looks wonderful, and we're moving forward with the restoration as much as we can. If you look at the, either the Commissioner's Facebook page or our Facebook page for Monroe County Veteran Services, you'll see the stone donations from the different quarries, Reed Quarries, I'm going to read them because I need to make sure that we recognize them. Reed Quarries Incorporated, Standish Stone, they did the slabbing. Stone Belt Freight Lines, they did the transport. Bybee Stone Company, Indiana Limestone Fabricators, Indiana Cutstone, Independent Limestone Company, Architectural Stone Sales, 3D Stone Incorporated, and Texicon Cut Stone LLC. They have been kind enough to provide us the stone at no cost. We have eight panels ready for fabricators. Mr. Travis Barker is working on the 3D scale models to present to the fabricators so we can get it as close to historically accurate as possible. I would like to point out, we are still looking for any photograph of the cavalry charge that is on the northwest corner of the memorial itself. It is, of course, the most deteriorated and the only one that we don't have a good clear picture of. So if you're listening, if you hear my voice, please see if you can't find a picture in your attic or your basement, or even if it's just in the background of a family photo. I would also like to very quickly recommend to my committee members, Ms. Debbie Reed, she's our quarry representative, Todd Schnatzmeyer, he's from the Indiana Limestone Institute of America, Danielle Bashat Bell, she's our project coordinator, John Summerlot, our co-chair, Duncan Campbell, he's from the Monroe County Historical Society, Jenny Tracy, American Legion Auxiliary Representative, Iris Kiesling, community member and former commissioner, and then of course, there's me. So I just wanted to give you that little update. Thank you very much for the community's support of this project. I know there's a whole lot of other things going on out there that seem a lot more important, but if we just keep chipping away at this, maybe we'll get it accomplished.
No pun intended.
Right.
Commissioner Giffens, do you have a comment or question?
Well, I just want to remind people, this is the Alexander Memorial that sits at the southeast corner of the courthouse lawn. But also, I was going to ask Ms. Elfman, would you just say one or two things about the new Veterans Fund that's been created?
Oh, yeah, sure. We have a pretty sizable homeless population here in Bloomington, mostly because we provide so many services, and that includes veterans. And what we found was a shortfall in providing housewares to people who are transitioning from homelessness to a home. So if a veteran is getting their very first apartment in years, they have very little except the clothes on their back. I can send them someplace for furniture, for food, but things like dishes and toilet paper and paper towel, sheets, pillows, that kind of thing, there is a shortfall there that we really don't have any particular agency to provide that. So thanks to TriKappa out of Ellisville, thank you Penny. We have developed a fund here for donations that people can send money. And what we're, our intent is, is that when a veteran presents itself and they're lacking these things, I can purchase them and set them up so they're not eating off of the same paper plate for a week or sleeping in a rolled-up sleeping bag. It's a wonderful fund if you have a couple extra dollars. We don't need a lot in that fund, but please, reach out, happy to take your donations. Also, if you're a, if you know of a veteran who's just recently transitioned from homelessness and they don't have those things, have them reach out to me. Thank you very much for asking, Commissioner Giffens.
Yeah, we were so proud to approve that fund last week. It's sad that we need it, but I'm so grateful to all the community members that we know are going to step up because it's, it's time to give back to those who gave so much for us. And I encourage everyone to get in touch with the Veteran Service Office and find out how you can make a donation to help a veteran in need. I will also say that it may seem like folly to somebody who says, oh my gosh, you got the pandemic and we have issues throughout our community, and we do. But if, you know, I'm so grateful for the limestone companies and all of the folks who are volunteering and donating to make this monument better, to improve it, to remodel it, so it's going to be here for future generations. It is such a pleasure to see something being created and recreated at a time when everything just seems to be filled with bad news. So just a huge thank you to every single person on that committee. I know they've worked really hard, they've secured funding, and, and everyone who has offered services and goods to make this monument fabulous, once again, for our public. Thank you, thanks so much, thanks for the update. All right, and with that, we will move on to public comment. This is for items not on our agenda. Ms. Dayton, if you would sound the tone that folks will hear when they have 30 seconds left.
Let me just one moment, please.
Great, so that will be at 30 seconds left go in your statement. So we appreciate everybody abiding by that. We will have to cut folks off at three minutes. And with that, we will take the first public comment, and again, three minutes and for items not on our agenda.
First up is Nathan Muchler.
Right, thank you. Mr. Muchler, welcome, good morning. Good morning.
Yes, can you hear me now, sorry?
We can, we can, thank you.
Power, some kind of improvising.
Yes.
So I appreciate you taking the time to hear from me today. I want to speak briefly on two things. The first is off the cuff in response to the veterans representative who gave an update earlier on the monument and described them as little protests. I do find that a little discouraging to disregard a community that among many other important topics was working and continues to work for equity for all citizens, for veterans, for veterans of color who are disproportionately impacted by housing issues. And it saddens me that we missed a chance for solidarity there, it sounds like, to work with the county and to understand how we could work at goals that we share. The other point that I would like to remind this body of is, in case you haven't been seeing the news, Homeland Security has been deployed to Portland. This weekend, it will be deployed to Chicago. This is a group of unidentified militarized policemen who are snatching people off the streets into unmarked vans. This should be very scary, this should be very concerning to all of us, and I would like to encourage this body to think creatively and passionately about how it can use its authority and leverage to discourage our sheriff's office from continuing to cooperate with ICE in a way that might invite these jackbooted thugs, these goon squads, into our community to snatch our citizens off the street and arbitrarily detain them. This is a new issue, this is something that's moving quickly. I would encourage you to research it, educate yourself, and given our sheriff's history of cooperating with ICE, again, anything in your power that you can do to discourage that and to keep our community safe from what I fear is an American Gestapo, and unfortunately, I don't think that's hyperbole at this point, would be, would be of value. Thank you so much, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler, we appreciate your comment. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer public comment on an item not on our agenda?
There do not appear to be any, Henry.
Great, thank you, everyone, thank you so much. All right, with that, we will move on to the next agenda item. Commissioner Giffens?
We have approval of the minutes of July 15th, 2020.
Great, I will second that. Any comments, questions, or edits?
I didn't see anything.
Great, thank you, Ms. Freeman, for that work. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of the minutes for July 15th, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Minutes are approved, 2-0.
Great, thank you so much. Next item, please.
We have approval of the claims docket for accounts payable July 22nd, 2020 in the amount of $2,868,216.98.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell, you're going to be presenting this information today for the auditor's office. We appreciate you stepping in.
Yes, the power, the power issues have affected some of our employees. And so the total for the claims is $2,868,219.98. There are kind of three claims that they, they'd like me to point out. One is for $1,291,386.24. That is for full-time health, dental, and life insurance. The second is for $637,109.49 for milestone contractors. And the third is $128,395.75 for Stonebell. And that's the third quarter payment for that. And other than that, I would just note, I, I've always felt sorry for our payroll person because it's never an even dollar and there's always some kind of cents on there and it makes it much more difficult to read.
Good point. So, so Commissioner Giffens, do you have a complicated, complex question of detail that you'd like to ask Mr. Cockrell?
I was surprised to see some, some things on there that actually apparently were approved back in 2016. So I hope that we can speed up things a little bit.
Yeah. Typically, yeah, typically funds are returned at the end of the year that are not spent, but they can be held. And, and sometimes these, these funds are also related to geo bonds that we're still finishing projects on. So sometimes you'll see that as well. Yeah, good. Any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. We appreciate you. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of claims accounts payable July 22nd, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Claims are approved, 2 to 0.
Great. We have a report on our agenda, but I think we're going to delay that a week. Mr. May does not appear to be here today, but I would just say that we are really pleased. I finally got out of the house, but we were really pleased to attend the ribbon cutting for the Stride Center. And we're so proud of how the community has worked so hard together to make that happen. Centerstone, Cook, so many agencies and organizations listed as part of the Stride Coalition, that this is a crisis center. I appreciate all the hard work that I know Commissioner Jones has put into this, and I know Commissioner Giffens has attended meetings. So thank you both for that. You really helped keep this project moving along. And I'm so proud that this is going to be, this is located, not going to be, but it is located on county property and that we're providing a lot of support and infrastructure for this. And I'm so proud of our contribution to this great, worthy project that is going to ensure that people aren't diverted to either the criminal justice system or the hospital when they're in crisis. So it's, it's wonderful and amazing, amazing ceremony and great to hear personal stories. That was a big part of it. So thank you for that. All right. With that, we'll move on to new business, please. Item A.
Move to approve Bledsoe, Riggar, Cooper, and James Agreement for Limestone Greenway. Fund name 2017 Geo Bond, Fund Number 4810-47151, in the amount of $7,330.
I will second that. Ms. Whitmer, would you tell us about this, please?
Oh, good morning. This is for the Limestone Greenway. Department of Natural Resources came down to do an inspection of the trail and they highly recommended that we increase the feet of how many fencing railing that we have. County legal went out on a field trip and agreed with their assessment. So, and also with this, we need to stabilize the shoulders better because of the angle of the trail. So we need to do all this together, makes more sense. The only thing in this agreement, it talks about the Monroe County Highway Department. I believe with all our meetings that the Highway Department will not be involved in this project. It will be the Parks Department's equipment and staff. We believe we can do it. If we get into trouble, I'm sure I'll be calling Ms. Ridge.
Great. That sounds like a great plan. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I walked the trail on Sunday and it was extremely hot. But I just love the Limestone Greenway. It's my, my trail of choice, I got to tell you. Beautiful. Thank you for making this happen.
Well, and on the, the topic of Limestone Greenway is that we will be having hopefully a garage put there by the sheriff's substation. In the sheriff's substation, officers have been controlling the greenway. So we do appreciate the officers doing that. It makes people feel comfortable. Our staff is out there Monday through Friday. So it's a very good teamwork, I believe, to keep the greenway safe.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from the public? Ms. Dayton?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Bledsoe, Riggar, Cooper, and James Agreement for the Limestone Greenway?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 2-0.
Thank you to your staff and the board and all their hard work to make this happen. Thank you. Great work. Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve D. Owens Agreement for CARES Reimbursement Administration. Fund name County General, Fund Number 1,000, in the amount of, I believe, $35,000. Is that correct?
That's correct. I will second that. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is an agreement for some help. The CARES grant and the CARES funding, that is to flow through, from the federal government through the state to us, has a lot of requirements. It requires, we're going to work with the townships, local businesses, local not-for-profits to get reimbursable expenses reimbursed. And part of the coordination and those kind of things are kind of things we need help with. This contract is with someone who is going to help us with those things. It is eligible for the same funding source. So this will be reimbursed to the county from the, from those sources. And we've already started and we're, we're working on getting the information put together and out to all the affected people that we can help. And this is just an agreement. We need to make sure it's handled smoothly. And just for the public's awareness, this reimbursement is for things that were spent from a date certain, in March, the, that date is, I think it's the 17th, or it may have been the 27th through the end of the year. But I think in order, we have to report it by the end of the year. So I think we're going to have an earlier cutoff than that. But look forward to having them, anybody who thinks they have those kind of expenses, businesses, and not-for-profits especially, we should have some information on our websites for them to, to review in a short period of time.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Did you get that typo fixed at the top of the?
I have it fixed and I do not know if I have sent that to... I believe I have even sent that to Anita.
Yeah. So just, just to reiterate what Mr. Cockrell was talking about is the state has, has, they, they did not have to do this, has graciously divided up CARES funding by population size. And we, Monroe County Government, although we did not have to do this, are, are going to manage, and that's why we need this contract. We're going to manage CARES relief funding for our county's businesses, not-for-profit, social service agencies. So if you have had a COVID-related expense that was not anticipated at the beginning of the year and that expense has been paid, but it has not been covered by other items like a grant or a loan or PPP funding or anything like that, if you have an unfunded COVID-related expense, we will get reimbursement organized for you. And it's really exciting and I'm so proud that we're doing this. I'm so proud of everybody in the auditor's office, Commissioner's office, legal, of course, made this happen. That form will be on our website and the information will be on our website by Monday, July 27. And, and so if you are a business, social service agency, et cetera, start looking for those receipts and, and collect them because we're going to have a web form where you can submit the information and upload the receipts that you have. And we will go ahead and seek reimbursement from the CARES funding from this, through the, through the state of Indiana. So awesome work, everyone, for making that happen. Ms. Dayton, are there any, is there any public comment on this item?
There are not any hands raised.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the D. Owens Agreement for CARES Reimbursement Administration?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
The contract is approved, 2 to nothing.
Great. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Harold Fish Agreement for Justice Building. Fund name cumulative capital, capital, Fund Number 1138, in the amount of $24,500.
I will second that. Ms. Purdy, good morning.
Yes, good morning. The, the Justice Building currently has three water heaters. Two of them have failed. One of them is failing. And what this contract will provide is for a boiler system. Please don't ask me to explain the difference. But I'm advised that this boiler system will be much more efficient and will actually cost less to run. So although it's a high price tag, it's obviously something that we need for the building.
Absolutely. And I will note that on the contract, there is an additional $2,000 for installation that we are not invoking. So this really is a contract for $24,500.
That is correct.
Yes. Thank you. Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
No, I, I found it fascinating to read the contract because of the, the kind of holding tanks versus the boiler system. And so, yeah, it's something new.
Yeah.
Great. Glad we're doing this. Yeah. Excellent. And they're, obviously, they're going to be working on this soon?
Yeah. Chomping at the bit.
Good. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you for that. Ms. Dayton, is there any public comment or questions?
There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Harold Fish Agreement for the Justice Building?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
The Harold Fish Agreement is approved, 2-0.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Move to approve NDOT Agreement for Hunter's Creek Road Project. Fund name Local Road and Street, Fund Number 1169, in the amount of $5,614.01.
I will second that. Ms. Ridge, thank you for coming back.
Good morning. This is probably one of the smallest NDOT contracts you'll ever see. Actually, it was a kind of a leftover from a PO from the, when Hunter's Creek Phase 1 started. So we had to renew the contract so we can kind of just utilize any funds that we can get to, for phase, for construction of Phase 2 and 3.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens? I don't have any either. Thank you for your attention to detail, down to the penny, as it were. And Ms. Dayton, is there any public comment or questions on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the NDOT Agreement for Hunter's Creek Road Project?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
And the NDOT contract is approved, 2-0.
Thank you so much. Excellent. All right. Next item, please.
Move to approve Beam Longest and NEF Agreement for Reconstruction of Bridge Number 308 on Rockport Road. Fund name Cumulative Bridge, Fund Number 1135, in the amount of $320,700.
I will second that. Ms. Ridge, tell us about this, please.
So we were, we submitted this for the fiscal year 2025 for Call for Projects with NDOT. We were awarded this project back in the spring. So this is the first step to get the project under design. We went through an RFP selection that we're required to do for the selection of a consultant. Beam Longest and NEF was approved through, they were scored and rated through the process that NDOT again sets those guidelines. Then we send that for final approval of selecting the consultant. Beam Longest and NEF was the highest ranking firm through that, through that scoring selection. So this is to begin the design. The project is an 80/20 split through design, right away, and construction of the project. And this portion is just for the design of the bridge. And it also includes a little bit of road realignment for the curvature.
Right. Great. I was going to ask that. And this is construction year 2025. So looking way ahead. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, when I saw the, the construction year, I was like, oh, my goodness. The, the way you have to plan things out is incredible.
It's, yeah, it's, it's amazing, but that's how long it takes you to get there because, of course, you go through the design. It can take a year, right away. Can definitely take another year. So it's, you have to get your environmental permits and documents and so, yeah, it's a process to get a project done.
Absolutely. And not to mention the funding side of it, which is huge, right? And that's, you know, think about all the, yes, and think about all the money you have pulled together from all of these sources. You're amazing. So thank you for your hard work.
Plus, one of the things that you've educated us on, Ms. Ridge, is the fact that a bridge that in the past would have been 100 feet long because of different environmental things, it's now 200 feet long. So a lot of different kinds of planning and engineering has to go into these things.
Absolutely. And DNR dictates a lot of that, the Fullerton Pike Phase 2. I think that original bridge might have been 50 feet long and I think it ended up being 215 feet long. So, and yeah, so the size of the bridge and what today's guidelines are is huge.
Right. Oh, and that's, it's, it's, if that can help protect the environment, though, good thing.
Yep, absolutely.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you so much. Any public comment or questions on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Beam Longest and NEF Agreement for Reconstruction of Bridge Number 308 on Rockport Road?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Agreement is approved, 2 to 0.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Item F, please.
Move to approve Ordinance 2020-33 Executive Order to Enforce the Monroe County Public Health Order and Regulation.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, what you have before you is, is an ordinance that is substantially similar to the ordinance we had earlier with the courthouse lawn. It is, as Penny mentioned earlier today, the Health Department, the Health Board issued some health regulations. And pursuant to Chapter 305 of the Monroe County Code, those have ordinance violation status and are, and are of that nature. And this is requesting the sheriff to enforce the order of, to enforce that order throughout the county. So that is the, what this does. It does have language in here that the Sheriff's Department role would be first in education and offering masks or other face covering, and only under refusal that any violation be, be looked at. So again, it goes with kind of the mantra that we've had all along, which is we want this to be an educational process and we want the, the Sheriff's Department to, to have the authority to play a role in that.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. Comments or questions on the order specifically, Commissioner Giffens?
Does this also allow for enforcement of the Crowds House?
Yes. Everything in that order, the health regulation, and, and again, Dr. Sharp's order is going to be reflective of that. That is going to be attached as an exhibit to this ordinance. And so that is, that is what we're asking them to enforce, is everything in that health regulation.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And with that, Commissioner Giffens and I have some information to impart for the public. We'll begin with the fact that over the past six months, more than 140,000 people have died in the United States as a result of COVID-19. If somebody had said in January of 2020 that our nation would lose this many lives, we would ask, how can we prevent this? COVID-19 is not a hoax. People have died and a lot of them. And we have lost 28 of our... And we have lost 28 of our own community members, at least, to this illness. In addition to social distancing and hand washing, there's something that study after study has been demonstrated to effectively keep our community safe. And that is wearing a face covering. It could be a mask, it could be a shield, it could be both. We want to thank our Monroe County Health Department and our County Health Board. And we have an order in place, as we heard at the top of our meeting and just now, which mandates face coverings and limits the size of gatherings. And exceptions will be, will be permitted with appropriate application. We want the next six months, we've, we've, this has been six months since we have been, we've had the first COVID positive test in our country. We want the next six months to be better than the last six months have been. We want to ensure that we don't have to shut down again. We do not want to shut down our businesses. We do not want to shut down our community. And they're doing that in other parts of the country. If you look at the massive surgeon cases and the lack of hospital bed space in places like Florida, Arizona, and Texas, each of those places started with, we've had an uptick, we have a few more cases. Well, we have had a few more cases here and we're seeing that here.
Law enforcement in our community are named as health officers and they can issue a civil citation for not wearing a face covering or not following other portions of the health order. Our goal is to have law enforcement officers serve the greater good of the community to demonstrate their care for the community by providing information and education and to provide face coverings to those who do not have one. However, if the only way to achieve compliance is for law enforcement to issue citations, we expect them as public safety officials to do just that. It's part of the public safety in this case. Let's protect ourselves. Let's protect one another and let's protect our local economy. If you want this health order to be effective, meaning if you want the next six months to be better than what we have just gone through, we ask each of you to reach out to the following elected officials to either thank them for enforcing the health order or to let them know that you expect the health order to be enforced. That's Sheriff Brad Swain, Mayor John Hamilton, the Bloomington City Council, and the Councils of Ellisville and Steinsville. It would help if they could hear from you. And so we've posted up on the screen contact information and all of those information individuals. And so, and, and I think for me, one of the reasons that we thought about this is that we have received so many emails from different members of the community thanking us for putting the mask mandate in place. People wanted this to happen and businesses are thanking us as well. So let, let's keep our, let's keep ourselves going. Let's keep the community open.
Right. It's great. Thank you so much. And we're so glad to have this information on the screen and we do encourage folks to reach out to those who now need to, we've done our part, the Health Department did their part, we've done our part. Everyone in the community who's wearing their face covering, we appreciate you doing your part. But now if you want this enforced, we encourage you to please reach out to these entities and ask or thank them if they commit to enforcing this really important face covering ordinance and social gathering size limit number. Thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. And with that, is there any public comment or questions on this item?
Looks like we have a hand raised for B squared Beacon.
Great. Thank you.
Give me one moment to switch to the screen sharing.
Sure, no problem.
B squared Beacon, go ahead.
Commissioner Thomas, can you hear me now?
We can. Thank you, Mr. Askins.
I apologize, I'm dealing with a new setup, so I was not able to hit the button as quickly as I, I thought I should. A question, just to confirm the status of the, the order. Even without this order, my understanding is that the sheriff has the authority to enforce what the order directs him to do. And the only thing that this order does is actually direct him so that now the sheriff does not have the discretion to say, well, you know what? I'm just not going to enforce that order. And I, I'm just looking for confirmation that that is in fact the case, that he doesn't need this order in order to enforce. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Askins. And that is true. Because the Health Board at their meeting last night by passing the regulation, in a sense, all, have made all law enforcement officers within the county, not just the Sheriff's Department, but all the town and city police departments have, have made them health officers for the purposes of this regulation. So I hope that helps answer that question. I don't know, Mr. Cockrell, do you have anything you would like to add to that?
I, I think what you said was succinct in that, you know, the, the Health Board is a entire county entity. It's not just outside the corporate limits.
Right. Thank you. Excellent. And with that, I don't see any other questions either. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Ordinance 2020-33?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved two zero.
Right. And Mr. Cockrell, a special thank you to you for getting this done so quickly. We certainly appreciate all that, all the hard work that happens outside of office hours. So I just want to note that we do not have any appointments. We do have a number of announcements. I will ask Commissioner Giffens to chime in at the end in case I missed anything because there's a lot of stuff going on. And most of it's really good. So I'm trying to embrace the positive of what's going on. So and first, I want to note that we are accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Please visit co.monroe.in.us. County buildings are open by appointment only. And everyone in a county building, including our employees, are required to wear a face covering. It could be a face shield, it could be a face mask, or the belts and suspenders method that I like to use both at the same time. So we will provide those for you, but that's why we're, we're open by appointment only. I will also like to thank from our office, Ms. Dina Delauter Myers for helping us distribute these fabulous decals. This is a bigger version. This is not as big as it will be, but it is at least legible for you and the viewing public. This, these are available as window clings for our social services and businesses anywhere in the community who would like them. And they're available through Downtown Bloomington, Inc., they're available through the Chamber of Commerce for Bloomington. And also, Ms. Delauter Myers is handing them out personally Tuesdays and Thursdays, 10 to noon and 1:00 to 3:00 at the north door of the courthouse. So drop by and see her if you'd like one. No charge, of course. And she's also going to be distributing face coverings to the public for free as needed for face masks and face shields at the same time, at the same location. So she's doing double duty and we appreciate her so much. And again, we do want to thank everybody in the community for wearing their face coverings. You are showing that you care about our business community. You are showing your patriotism, your love for your community and your love for your country. Let, let's make sure that we control this surge that's just starting in our community. I do want to note again, as Ms. Moore pointed out at the top of the meeting, that there is a fifth blood drive scheduled. We're proud to sponsor that. And we thank Monroe County Convention Center. This one is going to be August 24th. Go to redcross.org and look up that date, put in years of code and you will find it. Sign up because our, our last one booked out very, very quickly. And we thank everybody who takes the time to donate blood. We are in short supply around the country and it's very important to do this, so thank you for that. A note again that we will have CARES funding available for businesses and social service organizations in the community. And that, that form, that web form where you can upload receipts, these are for COVID expenses that have not been covered by a grant, a loan, PPP, other, other entities. These are unplanned expenses due to COVID that you have had to cover out of your own pocket, as it were. That form and all of that information will be on our website by the end of the day, Monday, the 27th of July. And we want to thank everybody who's worked so hard on this, technical services, legal department, auditor's office. We're very excited to be able to do this, to help out our community and keep our econ, economy vital and thriving. I also want to note that it is really difficult to see what's going on in Congress in terms of an impasse with trying to protect people from the impact of this pandemic. The moratorium on utility shut-offs and on many of the issues relating to rents and mortgage payments, et cetera, those are coming to an end this week. And we know people are struggling. We know that. We've, we have given a lot of money to our area food banks to help with food security. But something we did with the county council is we provided assistance this weeks ago. We provided assistance, and thank you to our township trustees, to help our trustees cover what we expect to be an increase in demand for assistance for things like utility shut-offs and rent payments. So if you are struggling, please reach out now. Don't wait. Please reach out now to your township trustee. And again, we thank them and their staff, all their hard work. But we are, we are standing by. We are providing that support. Commissioner Giffens, do you have any other comments or questions or anything?
Right. I noticed in today's HT that the state is going to provide $2,000 of rent support for individuals, but it will probably only take care of at most 12,500 Hoosiers from around the state, which is probably less than 1% of the renters. But you can get help by calling 211. Or you can get more details at indiana housing now.org. Again, this was in today's newspaper. You can't have gotten rent help from any place else, but our trustees could be providing other support for you for those utilities while you went this other route to get some help for rent. So please take advantage of everything that's out there.
Right. And if you do have questions, call your trustee, your township trustee. There's a township trustee for every single resident in this county, whether you live in the city or a town or don't. Everybody has a township trustee and they are going to be your source for help and assistance. Don't let it get bad. Don't wait. If you have questions, please call. I did have some information on some utility assistance that I passed along to the township trustees as well. I don't have that in front of me, but yeah, they have all of that information and they're going to be there to help, help make sure that you're okay and your family's okay.
Right. And, and I've asked Ms. Purdy to send out the information that I just shared with everybody to the township trustees.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Very good. Anything else you wanted to add for our announcements?
Oh, please just stay safe, everybody.
Please do. Yeah. It's so important. We want you all here. All right. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. And we appreciate everyone's time and attention today. And with that, we are adjourned. Our next meeting is the 29th of July, next Wednesday, 10 a.m. right here on the Zoom channel. Thanks so much, everyone. Be well.